Well, welcome to City of Omaha City Council Agenda Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Part Two. We hope you enjoyed Part One and let's get into Part Two. In Part One, we got up to twelve thirteen and we're at consent agendas, item fourteen through eighteen. Fourteen is an ordinance approving a TIF increment financing for the Brando Town Homes Tax Increment. Seven units building on the western portion of the lot will be subdivided into two. So they're getting two hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in TIF funding. The public hearing was held on September ninth. This is the third final reading. All the items fourteen through eighteen will be taken as a whole unless separated by one of the city council members. Okay. Fifteen, Tax Increment for Ames Industrial Park LLC. Now, this is located at thirty-eight twenty-eight Adams Avenue. Remember this Ames Industrial Park? Three LLC, remember this name because it's going to come up again. And as I said earlier in Part One, nothing has really changed other than the names of a few of the players. Well, this player, the name hasn't changed. And you'll see what I'm referring to as we get into our discussion. But they're getting ninety thousand dollars, not for affordable housing, but for commercial building within a blighted area. And saying that this project would not go forth if they didn't get this TIF funding. But, well, let's just move on. Another tax increment between the City of Omaha Central at Columbus Park LLC. This is for TIF funding for seven-story apartment building with one hundred and fifty-six units. The buildings will have five floors of affordable apartment units set on top of two levels of structured parking. This is for the use of TIF funding in the amount of five million, three hundred fifty-two thousand and change. The next one is the ordinance to approve the interlocal inter-local cooperation agreement between the Nebraska State Patrol and the City of Omaha to facilitate cooperations with respect to the Nebraska State Patrol's use of the City of Omaha's vehicle impound lot for a period of three years. Public hearing for these were all held on September ninth. The vote will be today. An ordinance to accept the bid from Priority One Courier and Delivery Service to provide courier service for the Omaha Public Libraries in accordance with the lowest bid meeting the specifications for an estimated annual cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-five, and you can see twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. And for a period of two years, approximately September first. Let's take a look again. The public hearing was submitted, held on September ninth. The following bids were received July twenty-second and July twenty-third for courier services for Omaha's Public Library. Now, you'll notice here, it appears that two companies bid it. Response total, so this one was one hundred and ninety-five thousand. Priority one was two hundred and eighteen thousand. Now, it kinda makes you question, is this the lowest best qualified bid? And it's, you know, it's interesting how the City of Omaha uses that term lowest best qualified bid. And here, it said that the lowest bid, however, it did not meet the specifications. So therefore, this is kind of like an automatic that this company would get it. And, you know, they go on and there's always this how they specify and give you this. This is the part where I always says it's the BS, it's the legal BS. And so they know anybody going to read it. And so this goes through, but it just kind of means how, how they can, the City of Omaha can pick and choose when they want to make sure that they follow everything by the line. Here's the breakdown for twenty twenty-six, fifty-two weeks, two hundred and eighteen thousand. And in twenty twenty-seven, for thirty-four weeks, a hundred and forty-two. So this will actually be four hundred thirty-seven thousand, fifty-one. Moving right along, so those are all of the consent agenda items that will probably go in one shot. I don't see any of them being pulled out. Moving on, the next set of the consent agenda items nineteen through twenty-eight. If you wish to address the city council, please come to the microphone and identify yourself, your name, so forth, and which items you would like to have, you would like to address. So, item nineteen, an application to appoint new liquor, no problem. Lottery services with Big Red Satellite, no problem. Lottery service granite through Big Red Satellite, Dundee's placement, no problem. Now, we get into issue to Jackson's Complete LLC for additional work for the sidewalk construction company. I am familiar with Jackson's Complete LLC, they've been around for some time. And what this is, unless somebody wants to make an effort to say something, I doubt. I don't see any reason why they shouldn't. So this would be, now Jackson's may show up, the cost of this additional work totaling two hundred and twenty-eight. I always say this is just a little where they spread it around to a few of the small businesses that aren't always in the loop. And they're willing to go along with, you know, they've been following and been involved with the city for some time. So that shouldn't be anything. It should go. Now, here we come down to, this is what I wanted to go back to. It's the same players, same players, just the name is changed. Of the game is the same with the same players. Remember when I said to the item up above for Ames Industrial Park LLC? I want you to take a look at item number twenty-four. Now, I know there's going to be some folks, because this is a North Omaha company, and they're going to have something to say, but you know, rights, right? And part of being in media journalism through the social media system is you have to report on it, regardless of who it is, where they're at. If you need to bring out something that's public, should be public, then you should bring it out. So all of you who will say, oh, you shouldn't say this and that. I'm not even going to say what I'm thinking. All right, let's look at this. This is a bid awarded to Spencer Management LLC, Omaha, Nebraska, being a Stores Expressway and Sorensen Parkway resurfacing project. And note, this is for three million, nine hundred ninety-two dollars, and I'll just say some change. But I wanted you to get into, let's look at this. This is Spencer, it's listed as Spencer Management LLC. Three million. But here's what I want to go through and show you is the bid. Look at the bid tabulations. Spencer, that's the lowest bid. This is the column that shows the percent over low bid. The next bid, Iowa Civil Contracting, one hundred and fifteen percent over the low bid. Okay, and if there's this much difference between the low and the high, there should be an explanation is why would this be given just because it's the lowest bid, is this the best bid? When you have, there's a question, when all of these are so much higher, why is this lower? Hmm, does that bring any question to mind? So let's take a look at something that I looked up. And oops, I apologize. I tell you, sometimes when this thing gets to moving, it's so kind of hard. All right, Justin Moore is listed as the applicant and developer for Ames Industrial Park. It's right here, City of Omaha. This and the public record documents from Omaha City Clerk Office show Ames Industrial Park, developer Justin Moore. If you go over Spencer Management LLC, Justin Moore, same address. Same individual. This is the same individual that received the ninety thousand dollars for the TIF project that was on up above for the sixteenth, the ninety thousand. This is the same one that received TIF funding for his project at Forty-first and Ames Street. This is the same one that was at seventy-five North where they got their start. I'm just saying, here we go again. And then this is the same one that received funding back in May for the twenty-eight oh seven Charles Street and fourteen-ten North twenty-eight. So my thing is, why is the same individual and the same, there's more other developers in North Omaha that are, there are more that are just, and this is the reason why I say it's the same game, but the favorites, the cronies, the ones, they get the projects. And it's not right, no matter who they are. Right is right and wrong is wrong. And if you just bring it out, you know, this is, this is the way it goes. The game ain't changed. It's still the same game, it's just the names of some of the players, some of the players has changed. So let's move along here. So we're back to item twenty-five. Publish this petition immediate North Seventy-second Street, now blah blah. City of Omaha, let's look at this one, item twenty-six. Because you know, we have this situation with the homeless. Now, I will not be surprised, I will not be surprised if the director of the Housing Authority will come forth on this one as a proponent. This is a resolution between the City of Omaha and the Housing Authority of the City of Omaha to use twenty twenty-four home funds to provide rental assistance to the homeless and disabled individuals and families. This total funding of three hundred thousand dollars to provide rental assistance to homeless and disabled individuals, money will be paid. This is what we should be doing for the homeless. These are things, so this money is going to be available. And instead of looking at criminalizing, we need to be having the city council see that more money is going towards organizations and agencies that are helping the homeless. This funding will support at least, the minimum they must support is thirty low-income households to achieve self-sufficiency for homeless persons graduating from transitional programs and programs for persons with disability. Funding for rental assistance to low-income household was included in the consortium and the community developed programs and was approved back on June twenty twenty-four. So there's really nothing that, you know, should be even questionable. It will be a continuance and it's really just going through the, the contract and moving forth. However, the point that I wanted to make is, these are the types of things that should be, city council should be doing more of instead of voting on criminalizing the homeless. And because these will be like vouchers and things they will be giving. Twenty-five, twenty-seven, I'm sorry, Omaha Public Library, we know that's going to pass because there ain't nothing going to stop but their library. Number twenty-eight, this was the amendment of agreement between the City of Omaha and Victory Boxing in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for an amended agreement amount of sixty-five thousand to operate. So this was increased by from the fifty thousand to the sixty-five thousand, which would end in December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Again, we remember when we had the budget and this came up in the discussion. And mainly this was some money that came from District Four that was submitted and requested. So we add this on to all the monies that was be given. So it was a revised total award from fifty thousand to sixty-five thousand. And Victory Boxing is a good program. So those are what will be, as I said, I don't see any, probably won't be, well, I know there might be one person who come up for a pro opponent. Otherwise, it will be mostly proponents. Moving on down the line, we have resolution twenty twenty-five. Well, we know what that's about, obligations for the CHI Center. We know that's definitely a pass. I do want to bring in number item thirty. The public hearing and vote today, and this will pass. It authorizes the law department to settle several pending matters with Catherine Bella Castro Gonzalez related to her employment with the City of Omaha, including the lawsuit pending in the United States District Court. There were two, I want you to know that there were two different suits that were filed by former police officer Gonzalez, Catherine Bella Castro Gonzalez, the city. She won both of those claims. This one is to approve the five hundred thousand dollars that will be paid to her and then the hundred and sixty thousand dollars which will be paid to her attorney, Tom White. Now, she filed this back in for the discrimination. Why are we bringing up John Ewing signed this? And locally, there were comments supposedly by one of the mainstream medias that John Ewing conferred, or I shouldn't say conferred. He was in agreement with the actions taken by the chief of police, which is still the same chief of police, Todd Schmader, that he took the right actions in his actions that were taken against this officer. However, the courts didn't find it that way and felt she won. And as I said, there were two cases that she filed. And let's just stop for a moment here. As I said, there were two cases that were filed. One was discrimination and retaliation in twenty nineteen, she filed that. She was alleged alleging she was wrongly passed over for promotion to deputy chief. And the verdict in September of two thousand and twenty-two sided with her, awarding her six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in lost wages and damages. The total city payout for that, including attorney fees, was one million dollars, nearly one million dollars. The city appealed the decision, but the Eighth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals affirmed the verdict in March twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, bringing the case to a close. So now we already about a million in it, but if you remember the former mayor and was still upset and feuding, other retaliation in two thousand and twenty-four. Federal suit was filed alleging she faced additional retaliation after winning her first lawsuit. This included her firing from the department in July two thousand and twenty-two by Police Chief Todd Schmader. She claimed the termination was in retaliation for her previous victory. She also alleged that the city continued to retaliate after her firing, harming her ability to get a job with the Lincoln Police Department, an accusation the city denied. However, in September of two thousand and twenty-five, this is where we're coming into this one today, or I shouldn't say today, on Tuesday, September fourteenth, is she won and is going to settle for five hundred thousand dollars to her and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for attorney's fees. This will be resolved on Tuesday. And this is where, according to this, the mayor said, the new mayor said he agreed with the handling by Police Chief Todd Schmader. That's, he said, I didn't say it. The news reported that, okay? So we just going by what was reported because I didn't hear it come out of his mouth, okay? All right, let's get back to moving along. Item thirty-one, an ordinance approving exception, acceptance for the option of a two-year extension for the transportation of sludge, public hearing today, nope. The necessity of acquiring for the use of the City of Omaha private property for signaling, nope, that's good, good to go. Public hearing today, street light maintenance agreement, good to go. Acceptance on the bid of cash, what, in the total amount of ninety-five thousand for the concession, food concession. And you know, here's something, I'm like trying to figure out, where is all these North Omaha businesses who have food trucks and concessions and so forth? Did they not bid on this? Were they aware of this? Maybe questions should be asked. What is the bidding process for that? The final one there is public hearing, item thirty-five. Nope, that's good, special eye books and service to the law department. Non-action items are thirty-six through forty-seven, which do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at the present meeting. That will be the September sixteenth meeting. So these are things that will have their first reading on September sixteenth. Ordinance to amend the boundaries, da-da-da, major, the PUR plan, approved city's master plan. This will be an interesting here. I can't say that there will be a lot of people come forth for that first reading on September sixteenth for this, because a lot of people don't know what's going to happen in that amendment to the City of Omaha's master plan to incorporate the new parks and recreation. If you open it up, if you go into there, it was quite extensive. There's over like a hundred and fifty-seven pages to it. So I know a lot of people aren't going to want to look at that, but some of the groups like that have started monitoring the city council agendas, it is something you might want to check out. Moving along, the tax increments. This is the Charles Street Town Homes Tax Increment Financing for Twenty-eighth and Charles. This is the property, if you will remember, the Venture Fifty, they gave such a flowerly approval and support of items twelve and thirteen. This is where there will be the public hearing to September thirtieth for it, which is, it's already done deal, it's going to pass. And they are part of the new favorite children. They've gotten theirself in there. TIF increment financing for thirty-four twenty-five South Seventy Street will be having a new three-story apartment building with eighty assistant livings for seniors and twenty memory care living units for seniors. For this participation, they're going to ask for three million, three hundred thousand dollars for TIF planning. Wow. That is laid over to October seventh for public hearing. Ordinance on the first reading for September sixteenth. These are Abe Trash, City of Omaha and Westwood Solutions LLC, an ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorized disbursement Nebraska Crime Stop, or Nebraska Crime Commission, Stop Violence Against Women. Forty-nine thousand, five ninety-nine, chump change for women. With a match of forty-nine thousand, five ninety-nine, that's the match, two hundred thousand for women there. We always get the small amounts. Number forty-five is the interlocal agreement between the City of Omaha and Douglas County for the operation of joint nine eleven emergency communications. This should pass. Now, this is where we, you know, our previous mayor had a real problem with anything to do with this. You know, that's where, who went? Former police officer Gonzalez was involved in this. And you know, everything was, it was something, that was just a total mess. It was personal, personal, which was our former mayor's like to say a long time. Always, everything was so damn personal, but that hasn't changed because it's still personal now. Anyway, it should be interesting. The first reading will be September the sixteenth. I can't see why it would have any opposition. An ordinance to cremate, create a new chap, a new ordinance. Let me back up, a new chapter in the municipal code governing the local activities permitted under. This is where it, it'll be interesting to see who comes forth on this. You know, now that the mayor, or sorry, the mayor, the governor has made it much more difficult to handle the number of, I don't know, what's the term that they use, not locations, but the term, I guess, plants being able to be done for this, which is really restrictive. People voted for this, over two-thirds vote for this. And the governor, in his infinite wisdom, really cut down in his infinite wisdom um, really cut down on how it will be used. Um, now forty seven is the ordinance that was moved and the second reading and public hearing will be on September twenty third uh, twenty twenty five. I've already gone over in our previous review of the same letters that were in there for support and the opposition. Here we go. But we'll just bring her up. Dear Mr. Harding, I am in full support of the ordinance you are proposing, which would prohibit unauthorized encampments on public property. Since twenty nineteen, numerous issues have been reported to the mayor's hotline and homeless task force with no results. That's an absolute lie. But I want you to notice, this is, look at this area. The Keystone Trail between Blondo and Pacific Street have multiple issues, especially between Western and under the Cass and Dodge Street overpasses. This year, the trail under Dodge Street smells like feces and urine as a result of the continuous issues. Please see also the photos from August twenty twenty five, and it has been even worse recently. So here are, these are the ones who are in favor of the support of having this ordinance. And I wanna say again, I do not believe people are, how should I say, the majority of people. Yes, there needs to be something done about the homeless. But is criminalizing it and putting fees on there? Is that the way to handle it? Now, here is another letter. I have called nine one one numerous times regarding the safety concerns I have on the Keystone Trail. Now the Keystone Trail falls underneath Amy Melton's area. So could this be the reason why you have two or three? Here you go. These are the pictures. And that's bad. It's bad. But is the way to handle this? Is the way to handle it by criminalizing? No, it should be where there should be more of the item that we had above, where you're giving money to help these organizations, be able to help these individuals to get more health, help with mental health and so forth. So I, I wanna be very clear, there, we do have a problem. But it is not the problem of finding a way is to criminalize. Because if you could pay a three hundred dollar fine, you wouldn't be living underneath these conditions. So these are the ones, this will probably be presented on the twenty third, September twenty third. These are part of the all opponents uh, proponents. These are the proponents of the ordinance. Now, to take a look at some of these, and these were the ones, well, I'm gonna go through them kinda quickly here. Um, because we're gonna take more of this up in our segment that will deal mainly with nothing but homeless. And here's, as it says, criminalizing homelessness ignores the underlying cause of homelessness and penal, oops, sorry. Penalizing people for just attempting to survive is a short-term solution that will only make matters worse for people that are struggling and need support, not jail time. This is someone who is currently the Chair and City of the Omaha Rights and Relation Board. John Fox. Clarice Donback, and this I presented before. David Thicke, who was in sup uh, opponent against. And what the thing is, everybody is saying, we acknowledge that there is a problem, but is criminalizing it the answer? And this one was, this was a new one from the last time that we had on this. Forcing people into shelters also increases public health issues and safety. Look at the five or fifteen active COVID nineteen cases at the Stevens Center, which caused the shelter strain. We have people in these crowded buildings getting sick and getting others sick. You need to acknowledge the concerns and health risks. So what is your plan? And I hope that they read this. Um, what is your plan for those who are unable to stay in crowded shelters because of the risk of infection and disease? What is your plan for the mental health limitations? Do you plan to send them to hospitals? If they may not be able to pay or seek help? And he goes on, there's quite a few um, questions, I'm wondering, which I have tried to get out to Courtney. Uh, and I thought it was a male, but I believe it's a female um, to see if she's received any answers to her questions. So those are what has been received as of this date. Now that ends our part two of the Omaha City Council Review for September sixteenth, twenty twenty five. If you enjoy these reviews, please give something in your comments and subscribe so that you don't miss one. You'll get notified as soon as our reviews come out.